Good evening and welcome to the City of New Franklin Committee Meeting Wednesday, October 19th. We have three first readings and one second reading. And we'll begin with the first reading, Resolution Number 22R58. And Mr. President, quite surprised.
Shocking as a committee.
Shout out.
We will open a finance committee meeting with all members present at 6:02. Resolution 22R58, a resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency. This is our usual monthly, every other month type thing. From the general fund, $200,000 to the police district fund. Questions, comments? As usual, we will ask to waive the three on this. Moving on to Resolution 22R59, a resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a four-year policing contract with the village of Clinton. This is something we've been doing for many years. Our current two-year policing contract expires at the end of this year. The four-year contract will start out at a rate of $182,000 for 2023 and increase $1,000 each year after that. This has been, I think, a terrific partnership with them. I'm not aware of any issues. I think the price is a fair price for what we're doing and how the cost, the figures that they've come up with, the formula they use. And reading through the contract, I think it pretty much covers everything without too many issues. Comments, questions?
Just one. So looking at the police budget, it's right around, what, 5% of the police budget is covered this contract, roughly?
I'm assuming you're right on that. I didn't figure the number, but I'm sure you're right.
You did your intake a little bit.
Yeah.
So, look at the numbers. I'm assuming that you say for conversation purposes, like 2% cooler rates. Will this cover any incremental raises the officers get contractually?
Not if we go year to year. In other words, not from year one to year two. It really was an arbitrary increase, and then the $1,000. The contract itself is a $32,000 increase from the previous year, so it's about 21% increase for Clinton. But we didn't attempt to try to build in actual costs while we graduated year two, three, and four at Appletree.
Are we able to do that?
Oh.
Go ahead.
And this will cover the time actually spent there?
Exactly. Yeah.
Oh, I did notice in the contract, it says that this actually is the same cost to New Franklin residents also. Did I understand that?
It's based generally on that. There's a series of criteria. You can do the population, you can do the number of calls that come in. When we were doing the comparison for the, with the COG, we also had the square mileage. And so it doesn't incorporate all of those factors, but it's generally based on that.
Okay, so I'm understanding this says the annual rates are generally based upon the current per-person cost of providing policing service for the residents of New Franklin.
And generally would be determined. They are generally based on that.
And what does that exactly mean?
They're not specifically based on that.
So it would not be the same?
Well, we don't really, we really don't determine the cost of the police on a per basis. It comes out, if we divide the population by the cost, it comes out to somewhere in the range, I got the numbers in the other room, it would come out to, I can't tell you what the per-person is. I can if I go get my notes. If we extended that to Clinton and did it on a per-person, it would be a little bit over 200,000 as opposed to the 182. Now, when we did the 150 two years ago, they would have been about 185, and we did 150. So, you know, that's the best I can tell you in that regard.
So in other words, it really, it is not the same as what New Franklin would be paying? If I'm hearing you correctly?
I guess to use, when we say what New Franklin would be paying, in other words, what our per resident cost is, when we divide it that way, no, it's not.
Okay.
It's something less.
What about per call?
I don't believe that, I don't know that we did a percentage based on the per call. It's been somewhat of an arbitrary number, and I think it's helpful for council to know that, you know, for, if we discontinued the Clinton contract, we'd be driving through Clinton.
Correct.
Okay? As part of our patrol. We'd be, you know, we'd be basically the backup to them, you know, on calls as well. So that's part of the thing that went into this all along in years past, that it's a good revenue source for us. It really doesn't tie up a lot of manpower on a regular basis, you know, in terms of mileage and the vehicles. It wouldn't reduce, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any reduction in force, any reduction in vehicles, equipment, et cetera, if we didn't service Clinton. So it's sort of been a win-win in that sense. So, you know, no, we don't go pro-rata, exactly the same as New Franklin, but we think it's equitable. They're happy with it.
Happy with it.
And it's, oh, it's a good neighbor thing. It's kind of nice to know where you're at for four years from a budgetary standpoint. So, that's it. Other questions? Are you comfortable waiving a three? Would you rather take one more reading on this at least?
Okay.
I read them fine. Okay. Well, then we will ask to waive the three readings on this resolution. And you guys, they have some time.
It'd probably be a little hard to try to go back and renegotiate. The mayor's already done the work on it, so.
Yeah, and we have, and Clinton has just finished their second reading last night. So they've already presented it as well. Resolution 22R60, a resolution authorizing the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning and Zoning Commission members to be paid $75 per meeting. And this is an increase from $40, and the rate has not increased since 2007. And we pretty much talked about it at the last meeting and discussed the idea of doing this, and I think it was pretty favorable then. Any questions, comments?
Do we pay any of the other boards? Or is this something that's going to apply potentially to other, probably certain departments?
No, we purposely didn't include parks. They're at $25. And everybody's comfortable with that, based on, you know, the requirements, what we expect of people on those boards. So, no. It would just be the planning and zoning and the BCA. They haven't, as you see from the body of the legislation, there hasn't been an increase since 2007, so it's been 15 years. The 75, we maybe could have gone a little lower. My thinking is on this that probably, it might be another 15 years before we revisit it again. So we put something in place that we don't have to come back and change it every two, three, four years. When we start to compare other communities, we got a little bit of pricing, we didn't go too far. Coventry is, just went up to $50. Barton, and I was surprised, they get, they pay nothing for their boards. Green, on the other hand, pays $1,500 a year. And so we thought 75 was a decent number, given the, you know, the work that they do. And it's a per meeting. So, fighting the zoning, for instance, I haven't met that many times this year. But in any event, we want to continue to try to attract good people. And I think that the, it's going to become more important as time goes on. I think there's going to be more for those boards to deal with as time goes on, as we suit some new development from Apple.
Thanks for having mentioned too, that these people, they're not just showing up and attending the meeting. Some of these meetings in the last hours, they're doing a lot of legwork. Up to me, and their properties, looking at it, checking codes, various things. There's a lot of upfront stuff they're doing before they can have a meeting.
I agree. And they can be complicated. It can, you know, not always, but it can get complicated, asking somebody to step up and do something like that. $75, I think is.
And this will be effective January 1st, so we're going into the new year with it. Wave three? All right. And then we have one second reading, Mr. Daniels.
I'm just taking this so you don't have to listen to Jim talk all night.
Appreciate it.
Resolution 22R57, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to enter into an agreement with American Legal Publishing Corporation for codification of the New Franklin City ordinances, online services, and future supplements and declaring an emergency. Mr. Mayor?
We're on the second reading, and this is something we've talked about for some period of time, trying to kind of come into the new millennium. The, we had two vendors that quoted us. The other vendor had set up a fee of $11,000 and then an annual fee of $7,000. American Legal's set-up fee is $20,000, and the annual update is approximately $3,000, and that depends on how many updates we have in a given year. That by itself, priced by itself, wasn't the, you know, I would say the primary consideration. These folks have a world of experience. They represent so many, I don't know who they don't represent. You go online and you look at codes, you're going to see American Legal. They represent Green, Barton, Norton, Towne, Stowe, Kent, Hudson. And one of those communities actually just went back to them, having had an unpleasant experience with the other vendor. So we're pretty excited about trying to get this going. It's going to incorporate the zoning. When you go through the agreement, I'm sure, you know, you guys have, it really is very thorough agreement, what they're going to do, and what they're going to do with our existing ordinances. They will point out to us if they're, if they come across anything. They have a team of Ohio lawyers that they work with on this. And when I say Ohio lawyers, I mean lawyers who are conversant in Ohio law. And so they will point out for us, for instance, if there's anything that they find is somewhat inconsistent with state or federal law, something that's antiquated, something that needs to be updated. So it's not just a matter of paste in Ohio revised code, call it the New Franklin code. It's going to be a thorough, it's going to be a nice product, so.
We can get the link to this, or the Boston, if you will, integrated into our new website?
Yeah.
This will make it nice for residents to have a question about codes, they can go straight to the New Franklin website, under the zoning, where you have to place it, then hit the landing page, and go to the search area, they can use search, basically a search box and search by specific words and find the relevant code.
Exactly.
Will we be able to consult with them on how the code is? I mean, is it, is it a two-way dialogue?
Yeah, even this process is, they'll come up with, there's some initial input they're going to be looking for us to provide, existing ordinances, for instance, if they're going to incorporate. Eventually, then they'll come up with a draft, and we'll have 90 days to review that draft, have input on that draft. So we'll circulate that draft to, you know, to council. And so, yes, we'll have that opportunity. And to the comfortable end, we'll move forward with it tonight after the second reading. All right, we'll ask to waive the third. Okay, and that will end our finance committee meeting at 6:15. Thank you all for participating.
Does anyone else have anything else to add? Anyone in the audience? Okay, then I'd like to call the order at 6:15, the regular New Franklin City Council meeting. Everybody, we're standing for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Fetterman?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Here.
Mr. Daniels?
Present.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, October 5th.
Second.
We have a first and a second, Kelly, would you do a roll call?
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Present.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Do we have any comments for the public? And we'll begin with the first reading. Kelly, would you read Resolution Number 22R58?
A resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the general fund to the police district fund and declaring an emergency.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on 22R58.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R58.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Kelly, would you read Resolution Number 22R59?
A resolution authorizing the City of New Franklin to enter into a four-year policing contract with the village of Clinton.
This is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on Resolution 22R59.
Second. We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R59.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
No.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0, 6-1, sorry. Kelly, would you read Resolution Number 22R60?
A resolution authorizing the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning and Zoning Commission members to be paid $75 per meeting.
This resolution is assigned to the finance committee. We move to waive the three readings on 22R60.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R60.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R60.
Second. We have a first and a second, Kelly.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
We move to adopt Resolution 22R57.
Second.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. And now our favorite time call, it's your time again.
All right, well, good, I got a lot of time, so I get, I stretch this out. No, here we go. First of all, in a word, Oktoberfest. We had, many of you were there, and it was glorious, and the good Lord blessed us with an ideal day. Volunteers showed up and worked hard. Judy Williams, who is such a great organizer, Katie Smith did a ton of work, Tim Canna was out there early, Brian Capra did a ton of work, they were there, those folks, Rosie Milliken, those were, they were there from dawn to dusk, they were there from the start to the finish, and then a whole bunch of people helped in between. So, and I just think it was really, really great, I think, for the city. So, probably a lot of people out there that, we continue to get people out there for the first time, which is beautiful, you know, it's just the idea, right? And, you know, I thank council for council support, for what you try to do out there, because the place sat empty quite often, and now it's, people come out and they enjoy it. There were moments during that day when you just stood up near the top, and, you know, they played games, you know, we got hayride. Matt Hicks, I want to mention him in particular, who volunteered his time, brought his tractor and his trailer and picked up the hay and did hayrides throughout the day, out into the state park, and it sort of also highlights what a great partnership we have now with building and continue to build the state park, that they want us to be part of those, you know, they want to be part of our events. So, as I mentioned, I think, in one of the things I wrote, late in the day, somebody said, "Where do we get the tickets for the hayride?" I said, "You can get a ticket, just go sign up." You know, so, anyway, thanks for everybody's support on that. That was a great event. All right, we, I sent out to you, you have in front of you, we received from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, which we always do, if there's a renewal, or a transfer, or a share ownership, a change in the share ownership of a holder of a liquor permit, the city has the opportunity to request a hearing if they have any reason to object. You have this on very short notice. I indicated we need to do something today, but we actually have another meeting on November 2nd, if for some reason you want to wait until then. But the reason I, that gives us, if we decided we wanted to object, that would be a little difficult, because we have to have an opinion letter from the law director saying there's a good, there's a good basis for our objection. I would think, there was nothing across, you know, that, the lights went off in my mind in terms of the names of the shareholders. We sent her with the police, I didn't hear anything at first from them, so if you're comfortable, I would ask for a motion, waiving any request for a hearing on this transfer of stock ownership for the Turkey Philink Golf Line, see?
So moved. Second. Kelly, we have a first and a second.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, let me see, I'm thinking things, we have, who wants a fire truck? We got a fire truck, certified pump-tested fire truck. I've been hitting them all along, I want the key so I can drive it.
Where's the key?
I didn't know that. Of course it doesn't have a key. Anyway, we had, we had our auction last, in the fall, and Resolution 22R44, consistent with the Ohio Revised Code, we authorized the auction and the sale of property, and any property that has a value, estimated value over $1,000, requires the approval of council for the sale. So, the, there are two trucks, one of which, we're going to try to convert for use at the service department as a sign truck. The other is a certified pump-tested fire pumper truck. It was appraised in February 2021 at $4,000, it's no longer current in its certification. It cannot be sold and used as a fire truck, consistent with the requirements of the grant, the half-million dollar grant we got for the new truck. For these reasons, the fire department and Assistant Chief Gun places the value at $2,000, recommends a starting base bid of $500, and it will be sold down at Kiko's. So, I'm asking council for approval to proceed with the sale and auction of this certified pump-tested fire pumper truck. You know what, Gary?
Should, but I don't.
Yeah.
Just Gary, I'm sorry.
He told, I know he told us something, it was like an 85, it was old.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was an 85, no, there were no, nobody else was interested in it.
This isn't from one of you, is it?
What would you do with it, Paul? I mean, would you just be like, for a collection?
I don't know.
Reason I'm saying, yeah.
Change of layering, just as mayor.
I have no idea what you do, you know, I, for a collection, yes. You can't, it's not streetworthy, you can't, you can drive it on the road, I don't think.
It's, it's just not certified for a fire truck, it's not, you could drive it on the road.
Yeah, you could get it for that. You could put it, you know, you could take, you could take the body off, put a flatbed on it, and make a service truck of some sort out of it, I mean, I could, you could, yeah. I could leave a couple uses for it.
There's a 1984.
1984?
Right.
You just need a motion to authorize?
To authorize the sale and auction.
Then I would make the motion to authorize the sale and the auction. Do I have a second? Kelly, we have a first and a second.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay. Let's see, that's, yeah, we do the stuff, just a couple, the leaf drop-offs will start this, this Saturday. We were a little late in notice on this, the leaves started falling a little quick, and we thought we had to line up and work out some things in terms of coverage. But they'll start Saturday, and they'll continue for seven weeks. We're going to take them into the first weekend in December, because we find them in the past, and sometimes it's a slow fall. I'll be from 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. a slow fall. Out of the, from nine o'clock to 3:00 PM, out of our service garage, that's 6523 Hampshire Road, grass clippings, leaves, small branches. We do not accept from commercial or businesses. We don't accept rocks, dirt, road, byes, logs, or firewood. And we'll have a couple people there helping unload. And this is all made possible by grants from reworks, some soil and water. And as I mentioned in the past to us that if you, they recycle them. They, they, they come to us, we take them out to compost. I don't know what we do. We recycle one way or another. Where they don't end up is a landfill. And I, and I did not know, but we talked in the past, that apparently they're really not valuable. When they go in, they, they end up in the landfill, they don't be great. Yeah, I know.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that's what, very promising.
Because they use, they use composting at home.
Yeah.
You know, to use that in place of mulch.
Maybe it's in the mix, I guess. Maybe it's in the mix with the whatever. So...
Maybe it's because they have so many in there at one time call. They probably mulch before they do that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. So anyway, that's going on. So get your leaves up in there. Let me see. Next Tuesday, we were waiting for the tennis and pickleball courts to be finished. And then now that they are, we're waiting for a little break in the weather. And we think that that's going to happen through the weekend and we're going the next week. And so next Tuesday at 4:00 PM, we planned a grand opening and a ribbon cutting for the tennis and pickleball courts. We think it's really going to be a great event. We'll have, we invite as many councils to be there. Please do so. We'll do some formal ribbon cutting. We'll be cutting that ribbon. We have lined up, well, we haven't, but you know, Robert Keith has been very helpful to us. We're going to have exhibitions on the pickleball courts and on the tennis courts. As it happens, the Manchester Girls Tennis had made a request from us to use the courts for their senior recognition. And they wanted to, that day, I said, well, good, we got something for you to do. So they're going to play some exhibition matches, which would be fun, watching some people play on the tennis courts. And then we needed some people for the pickleball courts, and then we got some people for the pickleball courts, including a 90-year-old senior Olympian medalist who's going to be here. And so she very well may be one of the people on the scissors.
I, I was just going to say, I think you found your scissors.
Yeah. And then I thought about maybe then taking maybe one of these seniors, the tennis players. We could have the old and the new and have them putting it together. And so, so in any event, Robert, do you want to share at all, you have some other pickleball dignitaries coming along and trying to get?
We have, we have ambassadors coming from Cleveland West, Cleveland East, Medina, Rosworth, Canton, possibly somebody coming from Portage County also.
Beautiful, beautiful. And some accomplished players, obviously.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So that'll be a lot of fun. So we're, that'll be next, next Tuesday at four o'clock at the courts.
Where would that be?
It'll be at the, behind the Manchester Middle School, behind Sister Field is where the courts are now. And if you haven't driven by them, it's, it's, it's pretty nice. That's another statement. Okay. Almost, let me see, we have on Friday, I'm getting ahead of the game in terms of focusing on local businesses, but the Apple Creek Bank is having an open house on Friday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Barbecue pulled pork and beef lunch. So we don't want to miss that. And it's free. We like that part. And sign up for a chance to win gift cards for groceries, gas, and more. They've been a good neighbor. They really want to increase their presence out here. And so if you get a chance, please stop by and support them at the open house this Friday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And let me see, second to last, I wanted to read to you, an email we got from an individual. I'm not, he probably, I don't know if he, I'm not going to use his name. But here's what he wrote. "I was involved in my first car accident in 57 years of driving. I was devastated and was empathetic for the owner of the car I hit. I just want to say that even though it was a bad situation, Officer Ethan Brown was a calming factor in the ordeal. This young man is nothing but class. He was empathetic, professional, and calm." Says he even looks the way a cop should. "I just didn't want to pass on this opportunity to applaud his conduct and encourage him and the department. I know this is often a thankless job. I want you to know how much, how appreciative I am. I pray for protection for our law enforcement officers on a regular basis. Thank you for serving." So this is really nice to get stuff like that. And that's, that's, I believe really the kind of, I know that's the kind of department we have across the board. So we're very happy about that. There are finance things to discuss, but I'll defer to Susan on that. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Paul. And Jack, do you have anything to say on the comprehensive plan report?
Um, yeah. Not a whole lot going on right now. We're kind of in waiting, trying to get Pope Meyer to interact with the group so that the steering committee doesn't fall asleep. So that's what we're, we're just kind of pushing a little bit of that, getting ready for the mail survey will go out election week. So somewhere around the 8th of November, the paper surveys are going to get mailed out. When you get those, there'll be an option to fill that out yourself, or you can scan a QR code that'll be on it that you can, where you can do it online. You'll have plenty of options. We're looking for volunteers to help do a little marketing, get some signs out, you know. Tom and Powell's going to talk to the Kewanas. If anybody can think of any other organizations in the area that we could go, you know, chat with and just let everybody, you know, the goal is to get as much word out to the community that we're doing as possible.
Jack, would some of the churches mention it?
That's a fantastic idea.
And I had it. Oh, Lord, that's scary.
Yeah. That's a, that's a great idea. Yeah. I think it should at least be passed on to the leadership of the churches and the...
I think, anyway, I can talk. I will. I could call and you can just sign it my thing.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan?
Well, I've got a couple of things. Were you going to mention or did you want me to mention about the insurance as well?
What, the health insurance?
Yeah.
Um, no, I'm not going to do that. So yes, anyway, the health insurance committee's going to be meeting this week. We did get preliminary information from, from our carrier. It appears that there's potential for renewal with about 15% increase, which when we projected out and made this switch to be fully insured, we had, we did the numbers, assuming, we knew what the first year's cost was going to be. We did an assumption of 25% the following two years, just to see what it would look like. And we came up with a three-year average, which was more economical than what we were even at that time spending. So it looks like we're, we're going to do even better than that. This first year renewal is a scare weapon. But we'll, we'll have more details on that when we get ready to implement legislation. And I'm sure Crystal will come here and explain to you. And she did some, some, she did some good negotiating work, apparently. Those numbers started, I'm sure, going through the two percent.
You had 32.7.
And she got done with 15. That's excellent.
So, so the healthcare committee will meet next week and we'll present it to them. They have no binding authority, but we're interested in their recommendation in general. So when we bring that to council, the council will know at least where that, what that community stories are. That's going to be next Tuesday at 11:00. So feel free to stop by.
And Paul and Susan, are the employees, do they seem to be happy with this insurance?
Yeah, we've, I mean, we've sort of taken their temperature. And as time has gone on, just talking to the department heads, you know, what do you hear in your departments? Also talking with, you know, the administration, with Susan and Diane, and it's been smooth sailing.
I think that's good.
At least no one has, we've asked and nobody has given us any feedback and negative feedback.
I think they would.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you, buddy.
No problem. As you know, we've been working on the budget. We've had the meetings. I guess they wanted to show you just what, what it's going to look like when you first get it. It's, it's like your old spreadsheet, only it's going to have like 40, four years. It'll have the annual appropriations for this year versus the annual, the projected annual appropriations for 2023. So you get kind of to see it all. There's also the column here, and it has notes, which is, that's why you don't have it already, is it went back to the department heads, and they are putting in notes so that you'll have more information. When you see a line that says, "Equipment," they'll, it'll be listing some of the equipment that they're planning on and what comes up, what brings that total up to where it is. So that's kind of what I'm waiting for right now. As soon as I get that back and we've gone over, I've gone over the changes and put it in here, I will send that out to you so you'll have time to look at that. And then after that, I'll create the actual resolution, which you'll get as soon as I get it done. But, but this is kind of what, what you want to look through and what has all the information on it, as you know. I know I was talking to Mr. Daniels and Mr. Powell about possibly the finance committee having a, some kind of meeting ahead of time, whether it is right before this meeting or whatever, so you could go through it, you know, piece by piece if you like. I know these gentlemen can answer a lot of your questions as well because they were in on every, every meeting. So they know pretty much line by line as well as the rest of us, or at least have a really good, you know, understanding of it compared to where, when you walked in, I would say.
Yeah, it was, I, I'm sort of, I'll add something to say too, but it was, it was a very good, a couple days of meetings. It was very valuable information. It was good to, to have more of an intimate feel as to the tone of creating the budget, what all, what all thought processes go into it instead of, instead of having a resolution handed to us and we're kind of in the dark. I know we, we always get offered, well, if you have any questions to ask. It was a little more productive to actually be in there and, and see how the nuts and bolts, you know. It's one of those, you don't know what you don't know. So when you're there, you, you kind of get a feel for what questions and the, and the comments were one of them. You know, we'd see one item that it was down by 10%. Well, why? There's got to be a two-word explanation that could give us some guidance. So it was good. And thank you very much for the efforts that have gone into the budget this year. It's, it's a significant improvement. It's noticed and greatly appreciated.
I'd have to echo Jack's comments there as well. I was surprised, obviously surprised, pleasantly taken by the enthusiasm of staff that was in there. They seemed very, very happy that council was interested in the budget, interested in their departments and wanted to have those discussions. That was, that was nice to see. One thing, when you do send out, will that be in a Excel format or will it be a PDF or however it is after this?
I can do either way.
If it's, so if we put the comments in, a lot of times you can type them into the Excel spreadsheet. The Excel will expand. We can get all the comments in there. But if we don't do that in Excel format, we might not be able to see all the comments. It's pretty annoying.
I usually double check that anyway, but I can send it as an Excel.
I would much rather be in Excel. I can, I can, I can do some analysis with Excel than...
No, I can do that.
With PDF.
No problem.
A great, great improvement. We're hoping to add first one to the...
Yes, I think, I, I hope everything went really well. I mean, I, we thought so. And it's kind of our, I know for you guys, it was new, but like, that's kind of what we do every year. So, and it's, and we always say, I always say, I know, that the more you know, the easier my job is. So I appreciate you being there and being there for all the meetings. It was, it was helpful. And you got a really, a flavor of what goes on between us. It's not like me sitting down and writing these numbers and saying, this are the numbers you're going to live by. It's everybody comes in and puts their numbers on the table and, and we work out what we know we can afford. And it works out really well. So that's all I have.
The department heads felt the same way. They appreciate, I think you saw that. They appreciated the area, everyone that has the folks at the table, just, you know.
And I think that we all appreciate it. All the council does. Some of us maybe, maybe couldn't be here. So we really appreciated it. And we want to talk with you and get your brains too.
Well, when the numbers come out, you know, we can have a bigger discussion, you know.
Which I think will be great.
We'll let them back to the public meeting. But that's fine. We make notes, we, you know, I think it would be, I think it would be very...
I think it will be too, Jack. I appreciate both of you taking it.
Well, I'm sorry, Jack.
I can't believe you interrupted me, Paul.
That's my characteristic.
Gary?
We'll make sure, we'll have this presented as a resolution at the first meeting in November. That'll provide plenty of time for three full readings. And to your points too, I think, you know, once council's had a chance to look at it, digest it, look at some of the comments, if there's a thought, well, we want to go into this area and that area, then you can do some planning in terms of, you know, expanding some committee meetings for that purpose, you know, as we move towards that third reading. So, but it's a great thing. And I appreciate the, you know, the impetus of council to, to get us on this transition. You know, it was, do we do it, you know, do we adopt the full budget in calendar year? Do we wait till after we get the final certificate of estimated resources? There's an argument both ways. Just that, you know, a lot of people do it this way. And I think it was a good nudge. And I think, I, I, you know, we'll, we'll see where we get this. I'm comfortable that we have this. There'd be some tweaking to it. But I think now we have a, we've got a nice cycle now. Everybody had, you know, adjusted to it real well. So that was a good thing.
Thank you. Old business? I think maybe I do. I'm not sure if it would be old or new. I went to an Eagle Scout Honor Court. Loved it, Paul. Thank you for giving me that opportunity. And this family, fabulous family. I wanted to hug them all, which I think I did, as a matter of fact. But they have two sons, both are Eagle Scouts. Just wonderful. And the ceremony was just gorgeous. I brought this in to share with everyone. But I really enjoyed it. I wanted to say thank you for letting me have that opportunity. That's all I had. Oh, his name is, I called him Steven, but they, Steven when, Steven Michael when. But it was really this gorgeous ceremony. I enjoyed it very much. That's the first one I'd ever been to.
Perfect.
I think we had another family that lived down on Trails Inn. I can't remember their name, Dings away, but I think your son, we were invited to that also.
Yeah.
Didn't get an opportunity. I think you did go for that one. But I did not get an opportunity to. So this was my first. It was fun.
Well, good. We'll try to expand that opportunity for the rest of council.
Yes, they would enjoy it.
What the value of the scouting programs. It was really great at, at the Oktoberfest. Stephanie and Erin Gomber were there and they were, they were volunteering. And they brought with them as an additional volunteer, trying to think where she helped out, whether it was on the slide or wherever, their daughter Tated. It was just a fabulous young lady. And, and she is a scout. We, we had been here. I can't remember what we on before. That's when I met her. It was a couple of years ago. And here she is now, giving her time to the community, like these scouts do. So that's a good thing.
These boys we just gathered, they were, it was really fun to watch them. I enjoyed it. Do we have any new business?
Some new business, real quick.
Oh, yes, sir.
I know with the last name, you talked about the proposal to look at the zoning code. Just look at it and kind of make recommendations is how, there's a guy that we had, a gentleman that had some questions about that. Could you speak a little bit about that for anybody else that may have some questions? Just about what it is and it's kind of changing.
Yeah, it's, it's styled as a diagnostic report. And the intention of that is to take a preliminary look now at our zoning code from somebody who has 40 years or so experience working in zoning and, and, and suggest to us particular areas perhaps where it's somewhat antiquated. There may be areas that are contrary to current law. They, also going to look at our procedures relative to take a look at the meetings and how we're handling our meetings and, and the administration end of it as well. But primarily, the reason I wanted this was because we started to come across areas where there's just, there may be areas where there are contradictions, but there's areas where, where there's a hole, just I'll use that term, okay, where you expect to see something there and it's not. Where, where a term is used, and the definition section of the code is a very, very important part of the code. When we say what's permitted or what's not permitted, well, what does that mean? I'll use, for instance, conservation subdivision, okay? What is that? All right? Well, you go to the definition, we don't have that definition. And that definition is contained in our subdivision regulations, which like many communities, we adopted some accounting subdivision regulations as part of our code, but they're not included in the body of the code. They're a whole separate document. And so now you got to dig into subdivision, some accounting subdivision. And so, so they're going to take that full-scale look and try to coordinate these things and make suggestions to us about, this really is, is basically substance stuff. It's not, what it is not, is a suggestion about, here's what you ought to do with this area, you know, of the city. This is, you know, you ought to start this new classification of zoning. It's really just to take a, take a in-depth look at the code and tell us, you know, where, you know, where are we antiquated? You know, where, where could we use some revision? And then that will come to us in the form of a report. And then the report will be available to council, will be available to planning zoning. Whether there's any action taken at that time on it, depending, depending on what the consensus is of planning zoning and, and council. The timing of it, I think, is helpful because it'll be coming, that, that report will come out, you know, as we, by that time we'll have survey results. And we always envision, I think, that, that there would, there could be some changes to zoning based on recommendations that come from the comprehensive planning committee. Maybe there won't be. Maybe there'll be a determination that will be up in place. Our, you know, our zoning districts are sufficient for our purposes, et cetera. But if there are, you know, we'll have a tighter framework to, to, to proceed. So that's, that's the intention of, of that review.
Thank you.
Correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going to restate what I think you just said. This is a look at the language inside the code to look for conflicts and, and holes, as you said, in the language, not necessarily the law out here.
Right, exactly. You know, we just came across another, it's the, you know, every, you know, everybody wearing the golf course has been purchased, although I do believe it's still in the, the deed's still in the name of the, of the current owners. At some point in time, if that purchase goes through, if there's any development in the area of that course that's in New Franklin, that's, that's the RL district. And the permitted uses in RL district are single-family residents with large lots. But also a permitted use is conservation subdivision. So this is like the latest one that just hit me, even after I've already, you know, it's, you know, nice and awake of it. What's that? So I'm going to the definition, we don't have it, you know, we got to chase it down. And it's nothing that's particularly problematic. I don't know if it's consistent with what people would expect for permitted use in the, in an RL district. So those are the kind of things I want to get highlighted, up to discussion. And then I would also anticipate a recommendation. We want this, you know, we want this, we want a unified code. I don't think we want people to have to go to three different documents to get those kind of answers. So, and I don't think that's a fully seen in other communities. Yeah, so, and it, you know, it's nobody's fault. This thing is, you know, I don't know if it's complete much at all. There's never been a full-scale revision since we were council. It's just been paperwork. A little bit here, a little bit there. So, yeah, I know it's time, so. That's a long answer to a short question. Primarily it's language. All right. I'm surprised, Andy, I've never liked to have any...
And Michelle.
I think we're ready for new business? Any new business? I have something, so do you. Do you have one tonight? Okay, I do. Aren't you glad I did that? We're, I'm going to talk about a business that's been here forever, The Luches Pizza. And I called Dale, and the mom and dad actually started the business in 1986. And I called Dale, and my mom and dad actually started the business in nineteen eighty-six. I can't believe that. I shouldn't believe it had been that long. Her mother is Mary, Mary's still living, and Dale, and her husband Larry, that she calls Hero. I don't know why, I didn't ask. I was kind of fearful. And your daughters Septhora and Justine run it with their mother Mary. Eugene was dead, he passed away in two thousand and four, but it's one of the best pizzas around. And their phone number is three, three, zero, eight, eight, two, three, two, eight, four.
She started that, she said this.
I know, but I didn't want to bring that up. Okay, I just, you know, but I was surprised that Mary was still living. I did not realize that. I thought she passed away.
She'll come in there every once in a while.
So she, I always loved her personality. And I was always so shocked how she took care of all those kids. And she said, "I just gave them the rules and they follow them." Love it. Does anyone else have any new business? Paul, do we have an executive session now? Does anybody in the audience have questions? None? Comments? None? And I would ask for someone to make an adjournment. Thank you, executive. Roll call, Kelly.
Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Hargit? Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Fetterman?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mrs. Stock?
And our next meeting will be November second at six P.M. in the council, in the council meeting.